Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council Budget Hearing Thursday, September 11th, 2014. If we would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes ma'am, I will. Mayor Aloys Taylor?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bel Colombo?
Here.
Councilman Steve O'Neil?
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton?
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe?
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Public. Please let the record show the City Attorney is absent this evening, and City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
All right. Yeah, any announcements, Mr. O'Neil?
None at this time.
All right. Any comments from the public before we get started on the budgetary process? All right, any comments from council? I'd just request, Mr. O'Neil, with respect, before we get into the actual resolutions on the budget, I know you've had a handout with regard to the proposed budget changes. That's a product of our last meeting. If you would simply go over those in some detail so that we can all get a grasp on what was in fact changed.
Yes, certainly. I'd plan to do that, and we've got a very brief PowerPoint presentation here for your review. We reacted to the comments that Mr. Loos made at our workshop in August and used our fund carryover that we discussed briefly that we learned will be available because we simply spent less money than what was in the budget. As usual, we try and be careful. And so, we took that fund carryover and used it to fund certain items. And I'll go over those in detail here. We spoke about the deletions before, and we have taken a fund carryover from our Transportation Impact Fee account, which will fund the current street project, and there is funding available to increase that by $50,000 for miscellaneous sidewalk and street construction. So, we've added that to the budget. The funding source is transportation impact fees, and it's shown as a general fund expenditure under the Transportation Impact Fee budget. The CRA budget, we've used the fund carryover to increase the CRA budget by $150,000. We've added money back in, $50,000 for paint-up fix-up grants. And I would recommend to you that we convene as a CRA. That's approximately one-half of what we've budgeted in prior years. I believe we need to convene as a CRA and discuss what needs to be funded and what you desire to fund, and perhaps consider some items as not eligible for paint-up fix-up funding. We added $60,000 back in for dredging, contemplating the potential project that is the common canal between the Gill Dog property and the city's waterfront park, and also the access canal from that point out to the river. We've added a penny-for-Pasco item. The penny-for-Pasco funding is eligible for public safety, public works, park improvement projects. We have added an item in there for $40,000 for an aerial personnel lift that we previously have had to rent on numerous occasions. I'm recommending that we consider buying that. It's a bucket truck without the truck. You haul it, and Pat has some additional information. But you haul it, and we use it in the past, or we've used it after we've rented it to fix lights here in this parking lot, to trim palm trees, and to trim other trees. It's an aerial personnel lift that can lift to about 50 feet. And so, we think that will be something that is used extensively in the public works operation. The next item is we've reduced the contingency fund in the utility fund to fund $5,000 for water conservation. And I would contemplate that we would continue to fund those water conservation devices that we discussed some time back, several months, that currently we would plan to use for CRA funding. However, your utility fund at this point can fund those items, and I'm recommending that we still continue that program, but we fund it out of the Water and Sewer Utility Fund. Just to highlight the budget and to summarize what's there, your budget is balanced on the millage rate of 5.4348. That is the current millage rate. It does generate a small amount of additional ad valorem revenue. It's slightly over $10,000, if I'm correct on that, Pam. Am I? Slightly over $10,000. You have already set your tentative millage rate, one mil over that rate of 5.4348 that the budget is balanced on. That tentative rate is set at 6.4348. The maximum that you can raise the millage rate to with a simple majority vote is 5.61. And then, a supermajority or a unanimous vote is required to raise it to when it goes over 6.1. The net total of the budget has been increased because of the additions from the fund carryover. The total budget at this point is $10,970,242. That still represents a decrease from last year, and those decreases are indeed as a result of red light camera revenues that decreased and other items as we went over in our workshop of August 16, I believe. The general fund total is some $5,072,836. Our CRA, our Community Redevelopment Agency Fund budget is $1,285,559. Our utility, our Water and Sewer Utility Fund, which is our largest budget, is $3,983,200. That covers all expenses and debt service for your utility fund and serves both the city customers and the customers of the city that lie outside the city limits in the city's utility service area. Our penny-for-Pasco fund budget is $481,150, and our stormwater utility fund has been set at $147,497. And with that, we'll open it up for questions. We do have a number of resolutions for your consideration. This is the first of your public hearings. Our second public hearing is set for September 25. The action that you take tonight can be amended and adopted in final form with any changes that you desire on September 25.
Questions?
The Community Development Fund, of that total we have for the fund, how much is unrestricted?
All of what you have budgeted is a budgeted number. We will have a small amount left over that could be considered unrestricted reserves. It probably will be around $40,000 to $50,000. Am I correct on that, Pam?
Was that a yes?
Anything else?
Yeah. I didn't know if Nancy had it.
Steve?
Okay. First of all, you mentioned the changes proposed. And in looking at the paint fix-up, in the past, I think we've had anywhere from 150,000 to 100,000. We've had that for a few years now. So, we're dropping that, although we're not dropping it entirely. Is any of that 50,000, you know how we just recently had set up five for the irrigation, of which I'm not even sure any was used at this point? No? Okay. Of that 50,000, is there going to be five within that, or is it somewhere else that would be irrigated?
We have allocated $5,000 in the utility fund.
Okay, okay. That's what you spoke of here in the utility funding source section.
That's correct.
Line item number. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we still had that. Hasn't been used. I think it will be. And you had also mentioned excluding some items. Where do we need to discuss that, that we would?
Well, I would recommend-
That be within the CRA?
Yeah, I'd recommend that we convene a CRA meeting and to review our paint-up fix-up grant program and our commercial grant. And you can determine what you want to fund. You know, I can tell you that $50,000 won't make next year if we fund everything that we funded in the past.
Right. Well, I think we would need to obviously look back at that and see what those, you know, what's on the table now, what we need to exclude. And obviously, you know, we've set it up to have 50,000 there. Okay, that's just a question I had there.
I just want to make one brief note. We did increase the contingency line item in the CRA by $40,000. So, you know, you'll have some flexibility as you move through the year to fund some additional items that aren't specifically budgeted by line item.
Now, we do see the 60,000 with the dredging. I thought possibly in 2015, we had some expenses coming in there with renewal of anything with tailor engineering. I'm not sure. Whether there are some shelved items that, you know, are going to cost us any dollars there. I'm just looking. 60,000.
I would tell you, I would expect the expenses to renew and extend those permits will be minimal.
Okay, okay.
Has it been five years already?
No, but I'm, you know, I don't know what, you know, in looking at 2015, what we would, as he mentioned, it would be minimal, but I don't know, you know, cost-wise what that would be. I guess now I can talk about it as we get into this. But in looking at the 5.43, the rollback rate, you mentioned about a modest increase. That was based on the 0.06 percent increase from the property appraiser. So, that correlates to what's noted here is $16,786 in additional monies, which to me is very low. I think if we, and how that's going to correlate, I guess my question is going to be, in looking at these two particular figures in the 6.43, based on our recent expenditures as related to CRA, and we see where we're at, what, do you know what the current number is in our CRA offhand? I mean, I know this year we've taken a larger hit.
The fund balance?
The fund balance.
It's $733,000.
Okay, so this year has probably been, would you say, the most impacted year? And with that thought, if we looked at the full figure of 6.43, that is an additional, if I recall, 220-some-odd thousand for an additional mil?
Approximately 240,000.
So, of that 240, is there a guesstimate, or I was told we don't have an actual figure, but of that 240 additional money coming into that CRA, what would be the difference between staying at the 5.43 and its effect on CRA dollars and the 6.43?
I'll have to get that to you tomorrow. Is that all right?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
But you would agree there is a difference, and it will equate to, I won't say significant dollars, but dollars nonetheless.
Yes.
And again, this is an area that's been impacted quite a bit, and that's my point. Now, we note those numbers and that impact, and we'll have that number tomorrow. Maybe everybody checks their email. You can see what that is. Look, we've talked about the possible new sources of general fund revenue, whether we're talking about stormwater, street lighting, waste hauler has been talked about, reinspection fee program in the fire department, et cetera. Those equate to some dollars. But I'm not sure how much that's going to be overall in the impact. And I know the tendency here is to stay with the lower rate. I'm kind of encouraging the other members here to stay with the 6.43. I know that's an additional increase. I think that we're looking at it very tight again. We, I'm just going to look at my notes here real quick. I mean, a top priority, if we're looking at lowering it perhaps in the future, and I would agree with that. I'd like to stay with the lower rate myself. But until we have these additional revenues that the last, who knows how many councils have tried to discuss, and there have been some ideas, and some of those ideas have failed and never moved forward, you know, we then could look in the future at bringing that down. The other large component is, you folks know we've got over $750,000 of funds designated CRA that we're paying in staff as well. And that's a number that I think all of us have agreed we want to work down. So, again, just a couple of quick points, and I appreciate the changes that came forward, and we talked about those. But, you know, I know it takes a unanimous council. I'd hope that we all could be unanimous. But I'm going to tell you, I'm in favor of the 6.43, and I know that's an additional one. I know in the past, we've been as low as 3.9. That was a little bit too low. I think we saw what that did. I'm not happy about it going higher either, but, you know, I think it's the right thing to do at this particular point. We start coming up with the revenue, and we've said that's going to be on the agendas upcoming. Look, we can look at it that following year, but again, you know, I would just ask you to look hard at that. And this number coming forward, CRA's been impacted greatly this time. Thank you.
Just to add one brief comment. During the last seven years, the ad valorem revenue collected by the City of Port Ritchie's CRA has dropped by 50%. And I want to clarify, the number that Aaron read to you is basically like an account balance. Most of that is yet to be expended in this fiscal year. About probably 500,000 or a little bit more. So, our actual undesignated reserves, I would clarify, are not budgeted. Most of that number is budgeted and still remains to be spent with payroll and other items that are in the CRA.
Chief, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but red light cameras have significantly reduced the tickets and whatnot, which means that people are much more aware and better driving habits and whatnot. Where do you see that program going? I know there's been a lot of controversy, but genuinely, where do you see that program going? Do you see that shutting down eventually? Because there's a lot of things happening with that.
Are you referring to the legal challenges and so forth? Well, I've talked to a lot of people about that, read it myself, and looked at it. Really, it does not appear that the legal ruling is going to have any impact on us right away, probably for years. Because the court held that the, there was no rules and no law regulating red light cameras other than just local ordinances. In the early years, and when the City of Port Ritchie started the red light camera program, they were one of the early ones to get in. So, for about two years, from the start date of your red light camera program, you were just regulated by city ordinance. So, that, what the court said was, there, those really weren't legal, but they didn't say you've got to pay the money back, or there's any sanctions. They just said, so now what's happening is, there's a number of groups that are threatening-
Well, I'm not sure that we want to discuss the liability aspect, but going forward on the revenue side, is it not the court's ruling that after the legislative action, everything from that point
is permissible? It is not that the legislature is banning red light cameras, that municipalities can use them?
And I guess one of the questions that should be significant to us here is how much have we, because of road construction, the revenues have been diminished substantially this year because we haven't had red light cameras on some of the major intersections? Are they all in place now?
They are not. We've met with the red light camera people about two weeks ago. They have done an evaluation of actually another intersection. We hope, and again, we're really at the mercy of the DOT and the county and their schedule. But it looks like, you know, they're talking, well, the city manager probably know better than I do about the construction dates and so forth. But certainly sometime in the middle of next year, we should have those cameras back up. So, we should get at least another six months with all the cameras in service, so. And there really isn't, there's lots of activity at the intersections. There's violations, I mean, consistently. So, you know, we're, we still think the cameras have certainly a place in the city for the public safety aspect, and that the number of tickets will probably increase as these new, as the intersections are cleared and the cameras are back up.
And how much have we lost in revenue in this last year?
About 30%.
30%.
I think it's important to realize, just that we brought this up, that, you know, the red light cameras, my vote for them was to make sure that, you know, because of the safety reasons and whatnot, if we're not seeing any safety changes, which I think we have, but if we're not, then I'm not so sure, you know, I want to go forward with them. But, so that's just something that I just kind of want to be aware of, where we're headed with the red light camera program.
Well, it's really hard to say because the US-19 is a dangerous place just because of all the construction and people driving too fast, and there's a lot of issues, and we're really trying to work and do traffic enforcement in addition to the cameras. But it's really hard to say because the construction causes a lot of accidents. I mean, I was on the way here and saw one that was caused by just speeding right near an intersection. And whether or not the intersection, they can do it or not is another matter.
I spend a lot of time in the road. I see a lot of red light runners, so. I almost got hit by one the other day, by the way, but anyway. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right, let me chime in. Tax is a tax. Whether you call it a fee for, or franchise fee for trash pickup or lights or whatever label you put on it, it is still a tax. Whether we talk about the fees or ad valorem taxes, we're talking about taxes. And I can tell in my discussions with people in the community, people are still struggling, and it's still difficult. We haven't, we haven't, some areas may have recovered better than ours. Other areas of the country, for example, but it's still in the filtering process down to us. It is obvious that we need to raise funds. We don't have enough money to do what we need to do. This budget, the finances are increasingly gloomy and prevent us from moving forward in things that are really important for the community. And I don't know, I don't know which taxes are more palatable than others, but certainly, this council, this city, needs to look at how to raise additional funds. And very closely, and we're, you know, funds, you can see that $10,000 increase is what we're looking at, which is not a, it's miniscule in terms of the needs we have in the community. But 10,000 is 10,000, and we need to look at other sources where we can generate some funds to move forward. And again, I think we need to be extremely creative in ways that may not put the substantial additional burden on our residents and find ways to put a burden on or cost on people who use our facilities and are not paying the taxes, as well as going out aggressively for any grants or any other programs we can. I haven't talked to a single citizen that wants to pay more taxes. Not one. Not one. But everybody wants services. And you can't provide services without the revenue to do so. And the needs are more, not less. What, Pam, maybe, if, what is the, I know what the revenue is for one mil to the city at 250,000. What is the impact on a $100,000 tax assessment for one mil?
It's about $100.
$100?
For the year, right? Yeah, for the year.
For the year.
$100 for the year, right?
Correct. Well, it's something we need to concentrate and look at because, you know, this budget is depressing. We're cutting and we're reallocating, and we're trying to squeeze out of sources that are diminishing. And we've got a lot on the agenda that we want to do. So, before I open it to the audience, anyone else?
Yeah, I, first of all, I wasn't quite sure it was $100, but that might be another figure. Are you sure that's the actual figure? Would be about $100.
It's $100 on a assessed or a taxable value of a piece of property. It's 100,000. If your taxable value, your property right now is $100,000, then it's $100. If it's $50,000, it's $50.
Well, the average for Port Ritchie, we're looking at a number that's probably going to be less than. Is that right? Yeah. Because I think before, when we had this conversation, we used a figure of $50, which was maybe based on something else. I think it's an important number. I'm glad the mayor asked that. You know, again, look, I don't think it's to any of us to want to look at a particular number. Look at other cities around us. Look at Newport Ritchie. I'm sure that they don't want to be specifically where they're at either. But services are necessary, and they cost dollars. And I understand that impact, whether it be $50 or $100 for the year. We've seen that chances are we're, you know, a little over the $50 maybe. And the other point of the CRA, but if I knew that we had, and we do on the agenda, we have upcoming talks on other revenue. But having sat here for a while, that hasn't worked out so well. And I hope this council can change that, and we can actually implement those changes and see what that additional revenue is. I just, I'm just not a fan of keeping at the 5.43 because I think we're going to get there. I'd rather hope that we are going to get there and then bring it down as we have in the past. And, you know, at one point, we got down to 3.9. You know, look, I'd love to see us trend down rather than trend up, but I think right now, unfortunately, we need to tread this one point.
Bill?
Well, I would argue the point too. Part of the trouble that we're in, not that we're in trouble right now, but part of the reason we're in the fiscal position we're in was the fact that we did go down to 3.9. And that put us running very lean and put us with reserves that we might have today that we wouldn't have had today because the rate was just, it was just too low. I mean, it just, it can't- I mean, it just, it came out of thin air. I was there at the meeting when it happened. Jerry Calhoun wasn't, the city manager, wasn't even there, and it was not at all what the budget had recommended. And Dale said, "How about 3.9?" I think that sounds good, and that's what was voted in. And we rode that for a few years, and it hurt us. You know, Pam will tell you, it hurt us a lot. So, I mean, I, you know, I obviously don't ever see it going down to 3.9 again, and we'd all love for that to happen. 3.99?
No, I'm just saying.
Because that makes...
He wanted to be under four sometimes.
Is that what it was?
That's what it was.
He did that, you know, and I appreciate the sentiment behind it, but it did give us operational problems for a long time. You know, I would also argue that the rollback rate is essentially the same as what we got. I mean, it's, and that's the way it's designed to be. It's not, it's designed to basically bring in the money that you had last time around.
This isn't even a rollback rate, this is the, this is the same rate.
What's that?
Is that, am I correct, Tom? This is the same rate, it's not a rollback rate.
The rollback rate is less, it's 5.4472. We just kept the same rate. That's what's according to the sheet, am I correct, Pam?
Yes, the rollback rate is 5.4472.
And that's because we're getting a slightly increased amount of revenue.
Right, right, okay.
At the existing rate.
Okay, so at the existing rate. Again, you know, you hate to raise taxes, sometimes you have to. We've been very modest in what we have raised. Again, this still will put us below any other full-service city. Will pretty much put us right at, I think, Dade City. Let me look at this. No, Zephyr Hills is 6.14. Newport Richie is nine something, Dade is seven something. The other cities, Pasco County is seven something. The other cities are not full-service cities, they don't have fire departments, they don't have police departments, so they're paying assessments. You know, you live in an area where the Pasco County Fire Department serves you and the Pasco County Sheriff serves you, you pay them an assessment for that. So it's not like they're taxes. I actually would like to see that combination number in here sometime, you know, combining those assessments with the taxes, just to show people, you know, the relative, the relativity of it. I mean, you know, I can certainly look at going up to the, personally. You know, my opinion where we should be is go up to the 6.1807 number. I think that brings in, I don't know how much more that brings in, can you guys tell me?
I'd like to be able to have an opportunity to go over that thoroughly and instead of like doing it on the fly and give you what we've all checked to be a very accurate number.
What was that number again, 6.1?
Yeah, that's the two-thirds majority.
Yeah.
It's 6.1.
Where are you, Bill?
I'm looking at page seven.
Thank you.
Which is maximum millage levy calculation worksheet. That's what shows you all the different percentages of...
Yeah, number 14.
Correct, yes.
The other was 5.61.
Anyone else on council wishing to address this before I open it to the public and then we get back to the specifics? All right, I challenge anybody out there to say, to come up and say they want to pay more taxes.
Yeah, right. I like to come up.
I'm going to open it to the public.
Chet Chasick, 5134 Miller Bayou Drive. Obviously, I'm not here to say I want my taxes raised. I just want a couple of things clarified. When you started the meeting, did I understand that anything going over six, what'd you say, six? 6.0 mills, you need a majority, not a majority, but you need a 100% vote?
Supermajority.
No, 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 no.
When you say supermajority, everybody has to vote for it?
Supermajority is everybody.
Everybody, okay.
That's 6.4.
Talking for myself, my taxes are going up, and I don't live in an affluent neighborhood. My taxes, if the, we go to column three on this tax thing, my taxes are going up to $238 higher. So I don't know what you're talking about, $50 or $100. Most of my neighbors, I'm looking at their tax statements online also, and they're going up anywhere from five to $800.
You know, is that a product of the increased value of your property? Is it a part of the?
My value of my property, according to tax appraisal, went up $6,000 this year.
Well, and again, if you've got homestead, there is the incremental rate that goes up. I mean, you're locked in to the, to the, what's the term for it? Save our homes.
I just look at the just value, that it went up $6,000.
And so part of it may not be any increase in the tax, the taxes that the government's levying, but the fact that there is an increase in the property value.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, what is a 3% limit on the save our homes?
All I can say is...
So I just don't want us to get blamed appropriately.
I'm just urging you not to raise it, that whole mill. I can see you need a little bit of money, but I'm not sure of that. I don't understand, it says your budget is balanced at where it is right now. You're balanced with where it is now.
Correct, that is, and that's a result of cutbacks or not funding things. That's a decrease in our ability to spend probably what we need to spend.
Okay, so you're balanced. And I see some other things on here, I mean, not a lot, but, I mean, paint fix-up, $50,000?
We had $100,000.
I know, why do you have, make it zero. What do you need it for? If someone wants to paint their house, they can paint their house, we're not going to... I don't pay to paint somebody's house. And what else? What was the water thing you got, was that water, water things for your lawn side?
To encourage conservation for irrigation systems.
You did that by raising, by doubling the rates. You did that already. Conservation, I don't water my lawn anymore, I don't have a lawn anymore, it's gone. It's weeds because of the water increase. I guess I'm done, but I urge you not to raise it a whole mill.
Thank you. Cuts, yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. Walter?
Thank you, Walter Lowes with Gildog, 5419 Treadway. I guess just a couple of points. I know we're, a lot of conversations being spent around spending money and so forth. But part of the conversation should be around what we talked about last time, what Nancy actually brought up last meeting, last budget meeting, and that was investment. How do we start to build our communities? How do we start to invest in our communities? And I think that's what we have to sort of also keep at the forefront. Some of the things that we're meaning to do to build our communities, some things that you'd find in a lot of communities, like sidewalks and things along those natures, proper street lighting, those take money. I mean, that's the reality, you know, whose responsibility is that? I think the mayor brought up the point last time. I mean, if you move to whatever city, you expect your garbage to be picked up. These are basic things that we were sort of looking for in our community, not to mention to spur private investment. You know, when private investors come in, which I represent a number of them, and they look at what communities to invest in, what do you think those decision points are? I mean, if we can't, if you drive by a community that can't, doesn't have sidewalks, what, are you going to invest in that community if you have private dollars? So, part of that is, you know, I know no one likes to have that, you know, look at some of these realities, but that is, I think, what we're looking at. You know, as far as looking at other funding sources, I know that I met with Tom today and Jocelyn to discuss that. I think we can start getting creative. I know with a lot of the developments that we've already been able to accomplish this past year, I know that there is a lot of attention on our area, on the city. You know, in particular, obviously, the area that we're most interested in and focused in on is the waterfront. But, Penny from Pasco, I've had a number of conversations with a number of the commissioners that have talked about focal points being obviously the bayou. But we, as a community, as Port Richie, as a city, so I put this out there, have to invest, too. I mean, we can't go out and expect and turn around to the county or whatever funding sources, state sources, you know, federal sources, and not have some skin in the game. So, you know, we talked about, I've been meeting with Bill Williams, which is our Pasco County lobbyist, and there's federal funds and state funds that's available to do many of the projects that I think would greatly add tremendous amenities to our communities. So, and there wouldn't be a huge dollar spend on looking at some of these options. So some of the investment opportunities I think that are in front of us and that would encourage us to look at are there in front of us. And I think we do need to look at how we make those investments. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Can I just make that one more thing? I just want to let you know, when I was looking at my statement here, my taxable, my taxable value went from 143,000 to 146,000, so 3,000 increase.
And again, that is based on the proposed millage rate, not necessarily the adopted millage rate on your...
That's correct.
Your term notice, okay.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's correct.
That's at the highest proposed rate, not necessarily what is going to be the actual rate.
I hope not.
All right, thanks. All right, let's bring it back. I couldn't agree more with than what, with what Walter said about, you know, we've got to do a really good job going forward and being as creative as we can because we simply need to spend those dollars to make this community the best community that we can envision. And there's opportunities out there. We've got to move on them, simply, and not decide to study them to death. And I'm frustrated at the lack of progress. Steve?
Well, if we look at the six, almost 6.2, 6.18, so you have basically a half-mill increase, which is half, obviously, of the 240 that was referenced by Aaron before. You know, that's one argument.
She was going to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Actually, it works out, we did the math while you were talking. $174,400 for the general fund.
On one mill?
At the...
At 6.2.
At the 1.6 point, what was it?
6.1807.
6.1807.
175,000.
Now, I would argue as far as with the water, and, you know, look, I've been here a long time. I think we've made some good strides in dealing with what we have as far as what we purchase, what comes up from the well, how that's serviced, how we take care of that. And we've come a long way from where we were, in a bad way, some years ago with the then-US Water, et cetera. So while I understand part of the water argument, you know, look, nobody was here to say you haven't increased in 10 years. So we had to do something there. But the other point that's lost in this is the figure of the CRA. Now, we've used a million dollars of that in an effort to dredge, and not one channel's been dredged yet. We did put changes in here to the proposed budget, which even names dredging in a $60,000 item. With the expenditures that we've had and those monies available, one can see there's not a whole lot of dollars available for that. The other side of the argument that's lost is that if you figure $780,000, that has to be used, I understand that, as a staffing measure, and we know what those formulas are. Those were established by a leading attorney, who unfortunately is no longer with us. That was a long process. That $780,000 would equate to, you know, roughly three mills. If you add the three mills to what we're looking at in the 5.43, folks, you can see right away that this city would be at a realistic 8.4 something, not 5.4. So these dollars have to be used for these projects that we look to do that right now, we don't have money to do. And I think that's the whole argument. You can make the point that a half-mill is going to satisfy that, and let's do it gradually, and I understand that. But, you know, again, as the mayor indicated, there's a lot to do, and we've been unsuccessful at this point in looking at those revenue ideas and making that happen, it just has not happened. We are going to talk about that, I feel confident with what's been discussed already, that we'll make some moves there that will help. But, you know, again, at the very least, a half-mill, not the rollback rate. And as I've said, I really encourage the 6.43 myself.
You know, I would like to add also, how much, how much again do we have in reserves?
In which fund?
In the general fund, you know, unrestricted reserves, just contingency fund.
Well, contingency fund's different than the, right now, the unrestricted reserves in the general fund's about a million dollars. But...
No, I'm talking, I'm sorry, and I'm probably wording it incorrectly, you know.
The contingency fund for the general fund this year in the new budget would only be $69,000.
Yeah, and that's part of my problem, too, is that, you know, with a total budget of, what's our total budget? Five...
In the general fund?
Yeah, yeah, total budget.
10,900,000.
10,000, yeah, $10 million plus. And a company with a budget of $10 million plus, having the budget balanced that thin and with that little reserves always scares me. There's a little tropical depression spinning off the East Coast right now that could come spinning over us in the next couple of days, you know. You know, I always like a little cushion. It always amused me that people felt that both governments and nonprofits, for instance, you know, should run basically a dollar-in, dollar-out type of business. And you can't do that because you don't know what's going to happen next year. There's always going to be something weird that happens. And you start, you need to start building a cushion, too. So, you know, I like to get some cushion money in it.
Let me clarify one thing if I could. Pam, when you referred to unrestricted reserves, are you estimating what would be there at the end of the budget year, once we've spent the money? Or is that just in the bank account now?
It's in the bank account.
Okay, so part of that money is going to be spent to finish the remainder of this fiscal year. Being fiscally prudent, I would tell you, we should have anywhere from three months to six months of reserves of operating expenses in the general fund. So we're going to have less than 1 million. We don't have that final figure here, but when we finish the fiscal year, that's quite a bit less than three months. And, you know, if we do face a catastrophe, which we still may face, we're overdue for one, then that money is going to be something that is going to be necessary to protect our citizens and pay our people and continue the operations of public safety and everything else that we know and we're accustomed to. So, we should gear ourselves toward that, I would say. And so, when and if you just make a decision, you know, we're delivering... And so, when and if you just make a decision, you know, we're delivering you a conservative budget because we want you to have the option. At some point, we know we're going to have to deal with our financial situation. It remains, I want to clarify, it remains strong because we're not spending. We're very conservative with our spending. So, the more you see it appropriate to adjust your millage rate, that money that remains unspent will be undesignated reserves.
I'm not happy with raising taxes. I'm just not happy because, again, I think we're in an economic situation that is far from robust. And in part of my message is simply, we need to raise funds. That doesn't necessarily mean the focus should be on solely raising taxes. Because raising the taxes is not going to produce all of what we need either. 175,000 is a significant amount, but nowhere close to the kind of stuff that we really need to do some things. So, I think part of our focus ought to be what other sources of revenue can we leverage, can we partner with to make us, to allow us to go forward and do the kinds of things that we all want to have happen for the city. So, the easy way out is to talk about fees or increase in the millage rate. And all of the, both of those things may be necessary, but I am just not happy with our inability to look at those other sources of revenue, whether they be grants or just other programs that are available to assist us, as well as other things that will raise revenue without having the brunt of the impact on our citizens. And I go back to the simple thing like parking fees that don't necessarily impact our residents, but will be paid by the users of that particular service. We have got to focus on that going forward, or we're not going to be able to be creative and do the kinds of things that we want to see happen for this city that need to happen in this environment going forward. We've got a good start. We need to make sure we don't fall back on that, or we may never have another opportunity.
Well, I think with what you've mentioned, because I know Nancy wants to chime in, too, I would just say quickly that I think the attractive nature of this is that we have talked about some revenue ideas, and I'm confident that some of this is going to produce. But I think at the same time, you know, could we possibly agree to put ourselves at least at the, based on what Bill has already outlined as well, which I think is very uncomfortable, put ourselves at the 6.18? I mean, could we talk at least of a half with the idea that, yeah, we are going to have some very good discussions on the increased revenue?
I wanted to add, too, if I could quickly. I've mentioned it before, and you mentioned franchise fees, which reminded me, and me and Chief Gabbard had talked about it a little bit, just because he'd been with cities that had a garbage or a waste hauling franchise to where we go out and we have that ability, because it's a utility as a city, to put out to bid to the different waste haulers and have them bid to us to be our sole waste hauler within the city, that we can make money off of that. And it won't cost the resident anymore, because it's, the waste hauler himself is going to be operating cheaper because he has a, you know, a locked-up area. So, he's got one truck running up and down the streets. Instead of now, we have three or four different companies running trucks up and down, tearing up our streets and such. And I think that's a moneymaker that I talked about with Ellen, and I've mentioned it to Tom on a couple of occasions. I mentioned it on council a couple of occasions. And I think that's something that's extremely doable and has the potential to bring in some additional revenues, maybe even lowering rates for residents, who knows? You know, so I think it's worth pursuing.
Nancy?
Look, we've come a long way. I can remember Pete Shatzel walking up there and saying, "Look, you guys are in a financial state of emergency, and we tighten our belts, we've come a long way, and we can continue to do that." I agree. There's no resident out there telling me they want their taxes raised. And quite a few of them, I'm seeing more and more people on the streets, walking the streets because they have no place to go. So, you know, I really would like to make a motion, if I may. I'd like to make the motion to adopt a millage rate for the fiscal year 2014 and '15 at 5.43%.
Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor? I just wanted to clarify that we do need to read each one of these resolutions.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for that procedural advice. All right. Is there any further discussion before we get to the individual resolutions in front of us? Sorry, Nancy. I'll get back to you. Anything else?
It's okay. I apologize. Skipped over a note. You know, just in regards to the intent of the CRA, and that is to actually increase the property values. That's the intent of the CRA. So, it's an investment tool. That's, you know, when the city initially applied for the CRA program is so that you could use that tool, those funds, to reinvest back in your community. Not to maintain the community, but it's to actually, like I said, invest back in the community to spur increased dollars, increased property values. That would be your revenue generation that you're looking for. And right now, I don't see that that's how the CRA is actually being utilized. And I understand it's been over a course of time, but that's, if you read it by statute, from the Florida statutes, is that that's how the CRA is supposed to be being utilized, which is not currently being utilized in that fashion. So, thanks.
A point of information for everyone. Mr. O'Neill has a chart of CRA funds, and they have plummeted. Well, the amount of revenue to the city has plummeted from probably a high in, let's see, fiscal year 2006 and '07 to the present one. I mean, we're talking about revenue that is 50% or less than what it was in previous years. That's a huge difference. I mean, a difference of $400,000-plus dollars that we're not seeing into the CRA, which emphasizes the magnitude of the limitations we're facing. All right.
Does anybody know how many empty homes we have in the city at this present time?
It was in here. I think it's actually in one of the charts, actually. I know I had seen it because there was a...
I remember, too.
Almost 28%, you know, vacancy rate. And I think right in there listed it. Oh, you know what? It was in the book itself, actually.
I thought it was like 30-something.
Pardon?
I thought it was like 30 homes.
That rings a bell.
I would consider that a loose estimate. I mean, it's very, very, very difficult to verify that.
All right.
I would also like to mention, sort of procedurally, as we make motions here on tax rates, if the lowest, if you start out lowest first, it gets harder and harder to pass a millage rate. If we start out with a, you know, if we go, if we make a motion and it fails to put it at 5, 4, 4, 7, 2, we can't bring it up again, not in this meeting. So, now, we got to go up another step. And if that fails, you know, we start getting up into a point where it takes, not only, it takes a total majority. So, I'm not sure that, if there's anybody out there willing to make higher, you work your way down, because...
Don't you have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, it's my second.
Nobody seconded it.
It was procedurally incorrect.
It was 1,269 number of homes.
Right. Just as a comment?
Page 22.
What was that, Steve?
1,269, the occupied housing units on page 22 in our book.
You can set a rate tonight and lower it at your second public hearing.
Okay, so, going to the agenda for the resolutions. The first resolution is 14-05, adoption of a millage rate for fiscal year 2014 and '15. And this resolution is a resolution adopting a millage rate for the City of Port Ritchie for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2014, and ending on September 30th, 2015. And let me just read the resolution for you. Whereas the City Council of City, Port Ritchie, Florida is required to set the proposed millage rate for the 2014 tax year and report the same to the proper taxing authorities. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, that the millage rate for the 2014 tax year be set at 6.4348 mils. The final levy of 6.4348 mils will result in an 18.3% increase from the rollback rate of 5.4472. The final millage rate of 6.4348 mils for the general fund is to fund the expense of the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2014, and ending September 30th, 2015. A copy of said resolution shall be forwarded to the proper taxing authorities. The millage rate on the above and foregoing resolution was tentatively adopted by a majority vote of the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie at a public hearing held on Thursday, September 11th, 2014. That is the resolution before us. What is your pleasure?
I motion to approve Resolution 14-05, changing the millage rate to, at, or I should say, at a millage rate of 6.1807.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Well, we've got a dim future ahead of us. We've got CRA that's practically non-existent at this point. Next year, we're going to be in for a heck of a time. A lot of our salaries, a lot of the salaries are coming out of CRA. I don't know where we're going to get the monies. And I can understand it's our responsibility to make sure the city functions. And I also understand where the citizens are at, myself included. I was hoping for a raise this year. County won't give it. They're going to play with the union, and there's going to be no increases. These people are working two and three jobs, myself included. And we're still not making ends meet. So, that's a condition of the public. The other side of the fence is people on fixed incomes. So, they don't want to see any increases either. And yet, the bills keep going up. As I look through the budget, and you'll see quite a few things here. We've got a vote for $35,000 in here. Now, I know everybody always tells me, "Well, you know, you're going to vote on that, it doesn't have to have..." It's in the budget. It doesn't look right. Not when we're up against this kind of pressure to keep the city afloat. We've got $80,000 in vehicles. We've got, what was the next page here? Was another vehicles for $160,000. What had to happen at my house is we had to cut back on things. And I think this gentleman brought up a good point, skin in the game. They aren't seeing any of our skin in the game. They're the ones that are having to sacrifice the skin in the game. So, it's easy to crank it up a full point and cover ourselves. But maybe it's time we start really looking at our finances and figuring out, how did we do it in the old days? How did we do it before we had CRA? How did we do it back in the day when, I know things were better and there was a little more tax base available? But I don't know. We've got problems. According to this, I did find it, it's about a third of the city supposedly has got vacant houses. I don't know how true that is, but if it is, that's affecting the bottom line. There's a lot of things affecting the bottom line. Wages and salaries are another one, and insurances. All those things have gone up dramatically. So, I guess we're going to have to think about the services that the city offers and try to find some kind of balance between what we absolutely need to maintain as services for the city and what might be able to be adjusted to either a lesser extent or maybe done away with completely. This is what happens when money gets tight. And the families, they get together and they decide what they're going to cut. Myself, I cut cable. I cut a lot of different things out. I don't go out to the movies. I don't do any of these things anymore because I don't have the money. It's a sad way to live. I don't like it. I didn't think this would be where I'd be at my golden years, but it is what I'm faced with. And a lot of other people out there in this city are faced with the same thing. And for us to sit here and raise our taxes and not do something on our own to try to curb the expenses that we've got. And I agree, there's, you know, revenue to be found out there, but I don't think it's going to be enough. I don't think the little bit of parking is going to be enough. I don't think that we're going to find the kind of monies. If we have to have a police car that looks a little more rundown, then that's what we have to have for a while until things improve. God forbid they ever improve, but, you know, I keep waiting and I don't see it getting better. In five years, sitting here, it has not gotten better. But we've got to start looking, and I think this is what the people in the city are starting to say to me, is, "What are you doing? We're not buying new cars. We're barely able to get, keep ours running, and yet, I keep seeing new police cars, new trucks, everything else. This is a wonderful thing." We've got a resolution that I came across for the Penny for Pasco, and we don't have to spend that on cars. We can spend it on other improvements in the city. And I, you know, these are the things I think we're going to have to pull together different ideas and start in a more conservative fashion to run the city. It's just going to have to happen. Those monies aren't there. The insurances are going up. If we want to maintain our personnel base, we're going to have to find ways to cut back. And every family's done it in this entire state. And I think we're going to have to start finding ways to cut back instead of raising taxes, which is easy. It's an easy solution. It's a good solution. It works. But I don't know how long we can keep doing these things, raising fees. I mean, I remember the elderly people complained a couple of years ago because they have to pay to get into the parks now in Park. They didn't like it. They did it. I wonder if they use it as much. But those are the facts that are on the table, and you're going to have to deal with the numbers. And, you know, I hate to go back to other things, but when we spend money and we might have other ways to conserve some of those monies, that's where we need to start sharpening ourselves up. And that's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a lot of thinking, and it's going to have to take some ingenuity. But we used to be able to run this city without CRA funds paying our salaries. So, maybe we ought to start going back to the old days and seeing, what did we have? How are we functioning? How much services did we have? And work from that vantage point, rather than to say, "Here we are today, and we can't afford what we want to do."
Well, I can tell you, in the good old days, there was grant money to burn.
Oh, there are.
There was money flowing from all kinds of sources. There was money flowing from all kinds of sources to supplement to what the city used. We had substantial dollars, for example, in grant funds to, to design and propose a parking garage. Not about, not out of city funds. That was all grant money. We had grant money for this, that, and the other. It's not there anymore. The, the state mandates all, us to do a lot of things and doesn't provide any revenue to do those things. So, you know, push comes to shove, the rubber hits the road right here, you know? And this is, this is at the local level where we've got to figure out how to do more with less.
Well, I think, you know, Terry brings some good points forward, obviously, in looking back. As Bill noted, you know, when we talk about three to six months to a year, having those monies available that we simply do not, I think we all recognize that the missing component here, we've hinted at it probably for a couple of years now, is the CRA and the dollars spent. And I believe we were even told from the accountant that this is something that we need to address and slowly wean ourself off of. And, you know, in looking ahead, it, it's easy to say that if those dollars aren't there, how could we really effectively remain a full-service city? Bill compared some of those rates earlier to some of those cities that are not full-service. Look, you know, we, we probably spend on the order of 1.4 and 950,000 on our two services. And I think everybody knows what those are. That's full service. That's what people want. They want to be able to get a policeman to their door right away. And they certainly want fire service. Now, in being full service, those are, I think, two very important components. And I think we've always done well in providing all the services that we providing, even including the bumps that we've had in the water over a time. But I think we can see that, you know, there is a perfect storm and, and, you know, some of that is, is coming towards us now. And as the mayor indicated, in, in looking at other revenue ideas, although, you know, we've noted that we don't know what impact those would have right away and how much we're actually talking about, just the fact that we are talking about them, I think, is certainly a move forward. And as mentioned, we would have those. But, you know, we've got to at least meet halfway here. As I indicated earlier, I was in favor of a mil, at the very least a half. I think we've, we've got to have a cushion going forward. I think, as Terry indicated too, look, we've, we've really have to look hard at where we're spending. And that's going to take a lot of work as well. I don't think this next budget will be similar to what we're doing now. We may have harder choices to make. But for right now, I think the best choice is certainly at least to be at the 6.18 rate. And I'm in favor of that.
Just to reemphasize, the action that you take tonight will set the tentative rate. You can lower it at the next meeting.
Okay. So, we have a motion to set it at 6.1807. Is that correct?
Correct. And a second.
We've heard the discussion. What's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. Well, she didn't ask for that yet, but...
Aye. It's three to two. It fails. Is that correct? I need two-thirds, which is four votes.
More than three and less than four. So you need four.
Yeah, I need four votes.
Yeah, you need four.
All right.
Yeah, you can't. We've got no three and a half.
So, I need another motion. Majority vote, let me just give you a little assistance. Majority vote takes anything from 4.4472 to 5.6188.
To what again?
Majority vote is required for a 5.6188 or as low as the rollback rate.
And rollback is 5.44. You mentioned majority and the number we have in item 13, the 5.6188.
Yes.
I make a motion for the 5.6188 rate.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Discussion. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Opposed? Opposed, nay.
Okay. The tentative millage rate then is at 5.6188. All right. Moving on then to Resolution 14-06. It is a resolution by the City of, the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, setting the city administrative, administration budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015. Whereas the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, is required to make a budget for the city administration for each fiscal year commencing the 1st of October and to show the estimated revenues and expenditures for the city's administration. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie that the estimated combined revenue, fund carryovers, and expenditures for the administration of the City of Port Ritchie for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2014 and ending on September 30th, 2015 are as follows. The foregoing resolution was passed at a special meeting, public hearing of the City Council held on the 11th day of September 2014. All right. Do I have...
Motion to approve Resolution 14-06.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it passes. Resolution number three, item number three, Resolution number 14-07, Utility Department Budget. Resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the utility department budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015. Whereas the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie is required to make a budget for the utility department for each fiscal year commencing on the 1st of October, showing the estimated revenues and expenditures. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie that the estimated combined revenue, fund carryovers, and expenditures for the utility budget of the City of Port Ritchie for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2014 and ending September 30th, September 30th, 2015 are as follows. The approved, the above and foregoing resolution was passed at a special meeting, public hearing of the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, held on July 11th, September 2014.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 1407.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Have a motion and a second. Anyone from the public wishing to address this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Resolution number four, the, the next item is, item four. Resolution Number 14-08. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the Stormwater Utility Fund Budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015. Whereas the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, is required to make a budget for the Stormwater Utility Fund for each fiscal year commencing the 1st of October and to show the estimated revenues and expenditures for the Stormwater Utility Fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie that the estimated combined revenue, fund carryovers, and expenditures for the administration of the City of Port Ritchie for fiscal years beginning on October 1st, 2014 and ending on September 30th, 2015 are as follows. The above and foregoing resolution was passed at a special meeting, public hearing of the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, held on the 11th day of September 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 14-08.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. If you're opposed to these particular budget items, what is it that you think is an alternative? We're here to approve the budget.
Because the budget is temporarily at that number, I can't, I don't feel that approving part of it is going to work.
The items in the budget are at the current rate.
Yes.
The millage rate is a separate issue and it creates a surplus.
I know that is.
But it is at, at the, at the present rate.
There are things in, in those numbers that I'm not comfortable with.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I, do I have any further discussion? Anybody from the public wishing to address this? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
All right. The next item. Resolution, item number five, Resolution Number 14-09, Penny for Pasco Capital Improvement Plan. Resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the Penny for Pasco Budget Capital Improvement Plan for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015. Whereas the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, is required to make a budget for Penny for Pasco Capital Improvement Plan for each fiscal year commencing on the 1st of October and to show the estimated revenues and expenditures for the Penny for Pasco Capital Improvement Plan. Now though, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie that the estimated combined revenue, fund carryovers, and expenditures for the administration of the City of Port Ritchie for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2014 and ending on September 30th, 2015 are as follows. The above and foregoing resolution was passed at a special meeting, public hearing of the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, held on the 11th day of September 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
You don't want to take this one?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 14-09. I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
Figured you wanted to jump in.
All right. Do I, anyone from the public wishing to address this?
Just a question, is there a copy of the resolutions? It's not in this packet here?
No.
Is it, is it the resolutions that are being imposed to the changes in the budget? Is that what we're...
Those are included.
Those are included?
Yes. Both the CRA and general fund.
Right. Have we gotten to those particular resolutions yet?
We haven't, CRA is going to be another meeting following this meeting.
Be next.
Following this meeting.
Following this meeting.
Tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, immediately following. I don't know, I don't know if it's going to be instantaneous, but...
All right. Thank you for the pass, Steve.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We have a motion and a second for Resolution Number 14-09. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes. Okay. That sets the, that's council business for this evening. Remember, we've got the second meeting on the budget on September 25th and we will recess very briefly and reconvene for the CRA.